Welcome, everybody, to our December 22 Board of Selectments meeting, held via Zoom as a result of COVID-19 and resulting of Governor's Executive Orders allowing for remote meetings. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order. And I'm going to call, so I will call the meeting to order at 6:31. Next on the agenda is to approve minutes. And those minutes are from December 8th, regular meeting, December 9th, special meeting, and to correct the minutes from November 24th, where, one way or another, we forgot to actually approve the minutes from December 10. So if we can get a motion to do that, it would be good.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December 8th, special call meeting on December 9th, correct the November 24th, 2020 minutes, to reflect approval of November 10th, 2020 minutes.
I second that.
All right, everybody, all those in favor? Can you post? Oops, what? I just forgot, I have my Christmas girls playing, hang on one second. This is my, my first Selectments meeting from home. Sorry about that.
No time.
Yeah, yeah. So the approval of the minute, okay, we did that. Audience, next audience is Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone here that has anything to speak about? I'm going to ask or relay some information and ask for, in addition to the agenda, just for, just to be careful on something. We have received two payments for COVID relief grants. One from FEMA for $4,344, and one from the State of Connecticut, OPM, has their Corona Relief Fund. Both of these ran from March 30th, I'm sorry, from March until June 30th. So they're covering any expenses that we submitted. But then they audited them and now we are, we've received payment of, you know, almost $14,000 so far to cover our expenses for those months.
How much was OPM, Angus?
OPM, sorry, that was $9,720.
These are expenses that we submitted, they reviewed and approved.
Yes, that's right. That, I don't know that it's required. I haven't seen anything yet that says that it is. But most of the time, when you receive monies from a, from the federal or the state government, we need to, to make a motion and move to accept those monies. So I'm going to ask if you could, someone would add to the agenda to accept, to vote, discuss and vote on whether to accept the FEMA Corona Relief, as well as the OPM, State of Connecticut Corona Relief Funds, totaling $4,344 and $9,720 respectively.
If you wanted to do that, Dwayne, I didn't write the numbers down.
Sure.
I saw you writing them down, so.
I'd like to add to the, to the agenda for discussion tonight for the money from FEMA, an amount of $4,344, and from OPM, an amount of $9,720. And this is a COVID reimbursement for money that was spent from March until June 30th.
Thank you, Jim, just a second.
Second bat motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, as I explained earlier, that's, this is money that we, we spent, you know, for certain, certain expenditures to extra additional cleaning in the buildings, putting on some, you know, buying, purchasing of plastic screens and things like that to have around the buildings. Just basically trying to ensure the safety of citizens as well as people in the town.
Will there be reimbursement from July 1 until current?
Yes, yes, that was, that was going to come next. This FEMA will be making that submission to them before, before the end of the year. But the State of Connecticut and the Corona Relief Fund has determined that they are going to release the remaining funds from monies that we estimated we were going to spend back when this all began, back in April or May, when this all started up. So the State of, their town, we estimated we were going to spend in the vicinity of $41,000. And, and the state has, we just sent the application in last week. And we will be receiving that money shortly. The state has determined to send that. So we'll be getting another $31,000 and change from the State of Connecticut later on. Hopefully, before the end of the year, I think they said we were going to get that. So that'll, that'll reimburse us for any expenditures through December 31st.
This may be a Board of Finance question, but will that money go to the general fund or will it go to the line items that was spent from?
That's a good question, and it, it's, without going for special appropriations, it will have to go to the general fund. And we can, but we're going to put a line into the, into the budget that is Corona relief or Corona 19 expenditures and Corona 19 revenues. So we will be able to balance those out. We are able to go individually through them, but for the sake of bookkeeping purposes, for easy bookkeeping, we're just going to have one line on each expenditures and revenues.
Thank you.
But yeah, that's, we're very grateful for that. I wish, you know, back in, when this was all beginning, the state asked us to estimate how much we were going to spend, saying, you're not going to be held to it, it's just a guess, we know it's just a guess. And almost immediately said, well, that's what, that's what you're getting. That's all you can get, so. But we'll see what, you'll see what happens. Hopefully, the more monies will free up. So with that said, like I say, I'm not sure that this is necessary. But, Dwayne, your motion, if you want to just repeat that, we can, we can, we can act on it and, and, and accept these, and vote to accept these monies.
I'd like to make a motion to accept money from FEMA, an amount of $4,344, and from OPM for $9,720. And this is reimbursement from COVID from March till June 30th.
I second that.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, very much. Is there anyone else that has any, Audience of Citizens, any other business? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to the review of the Executive Order 9R, Property Tax Deferral. Just this week, this, or actually, the end of last week, the State of Connecticut and the Governor's Executive Order 9R offered citizens, or offered towns the opportunity to extend the tax relief that we offered to our citizens back in the summer and spring. Deep River, if you remember, chose to, to go with a low-interest payment schedule. And, and the other option is to go with no, no, no penalties whatsoever. But that requires, you know, people have to send an, fill out applications and things like that, rather than, and then put that burden on the citizens and on our tax collectors to try to review all that. We determined in the summer to, to go with the low interest. My suggestion to, to vote is that we do the same thing with this. Just continue with the program that was already in place. We don't have to, it doesn't require any additional work from us or from our citizens. And we'll just make an, if we are able, if we agree to do that, we'll make an announcement to, to the community tomorrow, this week. And, and we'll put something in with the tax bills when those go out.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I, I know, at least from what I, what I understand is the tax revenues came in pretty much on time, and we're hitting targets and all that. I don't know if we have numbers of people that took advantage of it. It doesn't seem like there was that many people that took advantage of it, so that's good. But as far as going forward, I would think that that would, would be an acceptable way to go forward. Just for the simpleness of, of the whole thing going, going forward, my opinion.
I, I think, I think it's a good idea to continue it. One, we're, we're another four months, five months of people. Some people have been laid off all this time, and yeah, they maybe paid their taxes the first round. But being laid off, I'm sure the money's tightened up, and now we're in the holiday season. Do you pick and choose? Do you buy the kids' Christmas presents? Do you pay your mortgage? Do you pay your insurance or do you pay your taxes? So I, I think it's a good gesture for our, for our citizens, the ones that want to take advantage of it. So I, I second it, motion it, whatever we have to do, I think it's a good, good deal.
Thank you, guys, both. I, I agree, I think it's, it's, it's a good opportunity for folks to take advantage if, if they need it, if they don't need it, when they don't. And that's what we experienced last time. We did, our taxes were just a smidgen below what they normally are, what we've received thus far. And we'll talk more about that at the Board of Finance meeting. But we're doing pretty well, and I, I'm grateful to the citizens for paying attention to that. We don't need a motion in order to continue this. But I think it's appropriate to, to have one and to vote to do this, if you guys don't mind.
Well, I make a motion that we extend the, the tax deferment with the low-interest loan portion of it, like we have done for the first portion of the, of the pandemic.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, next on the agenda is the discussion, the adoption of the steep resolution. I set this up, so I'm going to share the screen with everyone, if they don't mind. Steep resolution, share. Okay, so, Dwayne and Jim, I sent this to you the other day, or maybe today. Blending into each other now. But this resolution, if you would like, we can, we can read it into the record. And I don't think that's a bad idea. And if someone wants to read it for their motion, that's fine, or I can read it. Actually, I've got it right in front of me. Why don't I read it, and we can make a motion to read it as read. But this is the resolution that we're suggesting to, to adopt in order to accept and move forward with the steep grants of application and agreement between us and the, and OPM. So whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 4-66G, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that First Selectman Angus McDonald, acting on behalf of the Town of Deep River, make an application to the state for $119,000 in order to undertake the Deep River Open Government Enhancement Project and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town, by the Deep River Board of Selectmen, one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Connecticut General Statutes, Section 4-66G; two, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by First Selectman Angus McDonald on behalf of the Town of Deep River in an amount not to exceed $119,000 is hereby approved; and, three, that First Selectman Angus McDonald is directed to execute and file such application with this Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance. And if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Deep River. So that will, if, if we, if we vote to adopt that, that will give us the opportunity to, to move forward and to start going out for, for bids and proposals in order to execute this, this grant and, and purchase things like the, the electronic signs, the, the computer system for the town, all the GIS system for the town, land use department, as well as the assessor and town clerk, and other assorted, and, and the, um, remote equipment necessary, the technical equipment necessary to, to continue with these remote meetings. Once, certainly it will be easier, but once we, uh, once we start doing in-person, we will be able to continue with the remote, with better equipment in order to, for folks to not have to come to the meetings in order to participate.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt the steep grant agreement that was read and presented to the Board of Selectmen this evening, December 22nd, 2020, in the amount of $119,000, presented to the town to move forward with it, if that's.
Yep, sounds good. Jimmy, you're muted.
Oops, I second that.
Okay, thank you. Let me, I can try to get this off so I can get everybody back on the screen. Stop sharing. Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's our agenda for the night. I'd like to just take an extra minute and wish everyone as good a holiday as can be, as can be had in these, in these times. I think we practiced with Thanksgiving, and now with Christmas and New Year's, we can be really good at staying in our small little circles and staying healthy and celebrating as well as we can. I wish everyone a happy holiday and, and look forward to a, to a brand new year, when we're next together.
Angus, I'm, this is Jane Samuels. I, I'm sorry, I should have, I came in a little late. Is the information for doing the, um, application and vote for the Ethics Committee, is that on the town website?
It is.
How, how do I find this? I'm not very good at that.
You know, I don't have that. You'd go to the, go to the town website, and I would assume that the town clerk has put something right up there that's, that's visible. But Jane, probably the best thing for you to do would be to call the town clerk tomorrow, and she can walk you right through it.
That sounds like a plan, thank you.
But I do know that, I do know that it's available online, as well as, as well as at the town. Call, just call, and she'll walk you through it.
Great, thank you. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
You too.
Same to you.
Angus?
Yep.
I need Christine's last name, if she could unmute.
Oh, Christine.
Sure, it's Christine Uche.
Oh, okay, thanks, Christine.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's our agenda. We'll take a, take a motion to adjourn, and again, wish everyone as happy holidays we can have.
Make a motion that we adjourn at 6:48. Merry Christmas to everybody.
I'll second it, and everyone have a safe and happy holiday, and hopefully a better 2021.
For sure.
We'll see y'all next year.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Tony.
See ya.
Good evening, this is the December 2020 Deep River, Connecticut Regular Board of Finance meeting. First item on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes from our November meeting. Now, Laurie, were you thinking about putting them up, or?
I can, if people want. Um, I can put them up if you'll bear with me a second. I've got to, people want, I certainly will.
All right.
And let me see if I can find share screen, so we can bring that up. The fun part will be, let me get rid of this, I don't, sorry, still playing with the computer. There's share screen, okay, hold on a second. I will show my desktop, and then let me bring up the minutes. And I'm sorry, that is an eyeball in the background, but that's what I do for the topic. Um, so, here is the screen. Has anybody wished to review it further?
I do not, I had read them over and thought they were adequate, but they're there. We were quite active, oh, that's right, we were quite active last month, weren't we? Two pages of minutes. All right. Could I have a motion from a board member to accept the minutes as presented in front of us?
So moved.
So moved, thank you, and a second.
Second.
All right, I'm assuming there is no additional discussion, so we will move on. I have, I have Tommy's, is Tommy with us, Angus, or, there's Laurie.
No, he's not here right now.
All right. There is his treasurer's report. I'm not sure what to add. It appears that we have, I do, what was this? As of yesterday, we have $3,874, I will round. He compares that, and I say that's the three minutes, that's what the town has. And then there's these other accounts, which Tommy always includes. But it, it appears that, it appears what? Twenty, so it appears that we have a little bit more money, which is not surprising than we did last year. I guess that is good news. Kate tells me today she had received almost $700,000 in tax dollars. So that puts us, puts us in more cash. Not sure what else to add. Do we accept, do we just, do we accept it, or we just listen to?
Just review them. Listen.
Yes, all right, then let us do that. All right, I'm going to ask for Angus to walk us through things that he thinks we should walk through. But I will steal the initial thunder by saying that, I'm not sure it goes to thunder, by the way. But I will steal the initial introduction. Angus and I were asked to attend the Board of Finance, Fire Commissioners Meeting on December the 9th, I think it was. The purpose was, Tim had asked both of us to come and to give some indication to the full board that both the Selectmen and the Board of Finance were, I need to be careful on how I pick this, but the, that we were, we are interested in continuing to move forward with collecting more current information about the trucks they were looking for. Did I capture that correctly there, Angus?
Yeah, I think so. I think they, I think they wanted some reassurance.
Correct.
And, and I think that Bud and I both gave them cautious reassurance, that, that the, the general tone of, I know that, I know the tone of the Board of Selectmen, and I think the general tone of the Board of Finance is that it is, it is past time to, to purchase this truck and to proceed with all haste. We had researched and have found funding sources. Now it's up to the fire department to, to research and find a truck manufacturer.
Good, and I, I subsequently ran into Tom Lee the other day, who told me that they have convened their Truck Committee, I think is what they call it, and they are going to go looking for information. So I have, we have nothing more to update, other than there is work going forward there.
I think we will have an update next month on timing. This is the thing that has become a little eye-opening for me. I can't really speak to it with any certainty right now, but the schedule for this purchase might be a little more delayed than I had, than I had thought, so. But we'll have that info for you next, next year.
That's right, it is next year. All right, with that as my, my contribution to the Selectmen report. Angus, why don't you take over, and you can start anywhere you want, but I suggest you start with the Governors. What is, what's the Governor calling it? Reenactment of the relief provided tax law?
Okay, it's a new executive order.
Bud, can you stop your screen sharing?
I can, I can.
Executive Order 9R was released a week or so ago. And that basically, as Bud says, it re, it reauthorizes the towns to continue, basically, continue with the tax relief that we offered last summer. We had the option, the Board of Selectmen spoke about this and acted on this earlier this evening. We had the option to continue with the, the same program that we offered last, last season, which was a low-interest extension. So for the, for the 90 days after January 1st, there will be a low, very low interest penalty to be paid over the course of, if you pay after the deadline of February 1st. That interest rate is the same as it was before, 0.25% monthly, 0.3% annually, which equates to $25 for every $1,000 of taxes. I think that the, the other option was to go to the no interest over the course of those 90 days. The Board of Selectmen chose to stay with the same program that we offered last time for a couple of reasons. First of which is the changing over to the no interest puts a little bit of a burden on the citizens and a larger burden on the town to, to ensure that people make the proper applications and all that kind of thing. It, it works pretty well, it worked very well last time, and I don't want to put words in Jim and Dwayne's mouth, but it was kind of an, if it's not broken, don't fix it, let's just stick with what we have. That's, and that's what we chose. So that's, that's been enacted by the town. So we, we may see some slowing down of tax payments, but if, if the last season is any indication, we will not see much of, of much of an impact at all. But to Dwayne and Jim's points earlier, this is a different season. It's, we're, we're 10 months into this now. Folks have been, lost their jobs, have lost income, all kinds of different things are happening that were not happening in July. So we have to pay attention to it and offer whatever we can to the citizens.
Correct.
The only other, the, the other thought that, that I'd like to offer to you is, we, we have received the first of our payments from both FEMA and from the State of Connecticut Corona Relief Fund for expenditures dedicated to Corona or COVID-19 between March and June 30th. That, that adds up to approximately $14,000. We got $4,344 from FEMA and another $9,720 from, from OPM. And that, that is for a term that ended on June 30th. The State of Connecticut has just determined that they were not going to make us apply like we did in the past. They simply said, send in, send in the proper documentation, and we will release the rest of the money that we suggested that we would need when this, when this began. So we're anticipating another $31,000 and change, I can't, I don't know the exact number, $31,000 and change to be into our accounts before the end of the year. That said, we will still make an application to FEMA for expenditures between July 1 and December 18th. So, you know, we're, I don't think we're quite going to be flush, but we're going to be pretty, we're, we're going to be in very good shape as far as not, not having spent a lot of money as a result of COVID.
Very good.
We should be grateful to our state and to our federal government for, for that.
So all told, it'll be $41,000 approximately?
I would suggest that it'll be a little more than that. This, from the OPM, it will be $41,000 and change. We may get a little bit, you know, I would suggest we might get another $4,000 or $5,000, maybe a little more from, from FEMA.
And Angus, that is, oh, that is 41 for this fiscal year? That does not count the dollars you referenced a moment ago.
That's, that's an interesting point, Bud, thank you very much for pointing that out. The money that we see that came in from FEMA and from OPM, that goes to last year's budget. Because that was money that was spent on last year's budget. The, the new money, the $31,000 plus whatever FEMA comes up with, will be attributed to this year's budget.
Laurie, was that your question?
Yeah.
Good, okay. All right, excellent. All good news. Anyone have any questions on? Good. Okay. All right. Excellent. All good news. Anyone have any questions on so far? Uh, Angus, could you bring us up to date on the, what is it? Small Town Economic Assistance Program?
Steep. Yes. We, uh, that was another thing we did today. There's not a whole lot to talk about, other than the Board of Selectmen just adopted a resolution that, uh, that assures the state that we will, um, we will utilize the money towards the program as described to them. We will be making, once we submit that resolution, we are working towards, uh, going out to bid for the, the different components of this program. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we will not be spending, uh, very much town money at all, but we won't, we won't know that until we get this and go with the program.
So therefore there is no action we, the Board of Finance needs to take tonight?
Not tonight, no.
You anticipate that that will, we can handle that? I'm assuming that the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen will need to send something to, well, maybe I don't assume that. There has to be some action to spend, to receive and spend this money, especially if we're going to authorize some money.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to go to a town meeting. Um, it's just a matter of when, and, and I don't, I don't think we can go to a town meeting until we've got numbers, real numbers.
That's correct.
You know, if, if we need to call a special meeting, um, I will ask you to, but it won't be until, until the, you know,
Down anywhere.
Towards the middle of the month.
All right. Sounds good. Now, um, you said town meeting. I have a leaning to, to say town meeting too, but do you, uh, does this board have, this board, what board? Here's a question mark there. Does it still have the authority under executive actions to make the decision to proceed or not?
Yes.
Do we have to go to Board of Finance? Okay.
We do not, we are not required to go to a town meeting if we can't, if we can't do so in a reasonable way to, to make it safe for everyone.
How much money are you talking about from this steep?
Well, the town, uh, the state is, is, is providing 119,000. The, the town is, um, part of our application said that we, for this, if we go, well, about 70,000. Um, but I don't anticipate we're going to be anywhere near that.
And would you refresh my memory as to what we are planning to do with that money?
Absolutely. Yes. We're going, we're, the first and foremost, we're going to, uh, purchase, I think the most expensive item on that will be to, uh, to purchase new computers and server system for the, uh, for the town hall in order to.
Okay. So that was what you meant by access to the town hall for the public?
That is, that is actually what we're going to need for the town hall to be able to provide access to the public.
Okay.
Um, and to be able to manage some of these things like GIS system, which is, um, which is not, not an expensive system, but it's about $10,000. And we're going to need to get that set up so that people can public, um, so the public can, can access the, uh, land use, uh, mapping, uh, assessors mapping and things like that. The, um, some of the other items on that are.
So you had to give them a proposal about what you intended to do with this money first?
Yep, absolutely. We have to.
Kind of an outlay, there shouldn't be any problem in getting that money because it seems like relatively, um, practical application of their money.
Yep. No, we've got, they've, they've already assured us. Today's, today's resolution, um, pretty much ensures that we will use 119,000 dollars from the state of Connecticut. That's, that's guaranteed to us. The question is how much of our money are we going to need to spend? And we're not going to know that for sure until we go out to bid.
Okay.
And the Board, and the Board of Finance will need to, if the town needs to contribute dollars, Board of Finance certainly will have to acknowledge that and send, and this is my question, does the, how, depending upon the magnitude of it, can the Board of Finance act, execute it itself? Or does it, is it required? And I haven't even said that right. We still haven't made up our mind whether we wish to use executive, our executive powers to just move forward or wish, uh, whether we wish to go to a town meeting. Does anyone on the Board of Finance have a preference? I will speak first. I like town meetings, although when I'm at a town meeting, I'm not that happy. Uh, but I prefer town meetings. I prefer to give citizens the opportunity to participate. That would be my leanings to go to a town meeting unless it becomes too burdensome.
That is, that is awesome. That is also mine. That's, that we've, we've worked very hard. We've had a couple of town meetings in the last few months and, uh, and we're getting better at them. They are very cumbersome to do them entirely on the computer. But I think that that is a small price to pay for allowing the public to participate.
The voting process is the cumbersome part, most cumbersome.
Yep.
Correct. Correct.
And that would be for approval of $79,000 if the town has to spend that much money to implement this computers and servers, et cetera, et cetera. It would be for the town to approve the expenditure of that $79,000. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm going to give you a yes, but I think the town has to approve the spending of the, the acceptance and spending of the 119 as well.
Right. The whole amount, knowing that the state will be reimbursing the 119 and the town's obligation will only be up to whatever.
Angus, do you agree with that assumption? That my statement?
Yes, I think that was pretty close. I'm sorry. I got a little distracted. Tom Linder's trying to get into the meeting and I don't see him trying to get in. So I'm going to try to.
I don't see him either.
Send him the, the proper information to get in. So if you'll excuse me for a minute, I will do that. Uh, before I do that, I want to just answer that. Yes. Um, the, in order for us to accept money from the state and then spend that money, we need to, we need to get authorization from the town. The Board of Selectmen thus far is able to, to enact, enable me to be our contact with the state and to assure the state that we are going to, we're going to move forward with this. But for us to actually do that, we're going to need to end up at a town meeting. Or executive order, but I, I, I'll be right back with Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see him trying to log in anywhere.
I don't either.
And I mean, everybody else has shown up at the top of my screen saying, you know, so and so wants to come in.
All right, let's see. Okay. Um, excuse me for a minute. It's going to take a little bit more than I can, um, normally so.
Do you want me to send him the, the link?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, but I can't, I'm on my computer. So I can't.
Okay, hold on. Let me, um, hold on. Let me just get into my email. Oh, stop. No, don't log into it. Just go to it. Yes. Visit the website, please. Sorry. I curse my computer all the time. All right. And, um, okay, wait a minute. Let me just pull up the link to our meeting. Hold on. It's easier just to cut and paste once I find it. There's one. Hold on just a second. Let me get the other part and then copy. Okay. If you want to tell him, I just sent him the link. My email, I just sent it to him. So he should be good there. There. Okay. Sorry, God. Bless you, Carmella.
Thank you.
John, where'd the dog go?
She's over here sleeping right next to me.
I've been abandoned. Everybody's upstairs with Al. All three cats gone.
Ah, John has, uh, John has given us visuals. Very nice.
That's Riley. Yep. She's taking a, taking a nap.
Well, it's been a busy day, you know?
And she's got a lot going on.
Things to smell, places to, uh, explore. Absolutely.
Exactly.
You know, every grocery bag must be inspected thoroughly. There might be a treat in there. All right. Come on, John, uh, Tom.
Well, he's got it. Actually, I sent it to him at the same time. So let's give him, let's move on and see, see if it works for him.
Excellent. Um, how about if we, uh, we claim we're still under, uh, uh, Selectman business and we use that to follow up with a email or memo that Angus sent to us. We use that as an introduction. And this is where we will look at the transfers that are needed to balance the budget that ended in, in June. All right. Now, um, I have been looking at this, you, you folks have been looking at it for many years. I have been, uh, looking at it since I was a Selectman in, uh, the eighties. It is, it sometimes lacks context, but what we're attempting to do, if you remember during last year's budget, we would discuss that there were certain line items that were over expended. And you'll see those line items on the left-hand side. I believe there's six of them. Selectmen, Fire Department, Communications, Civil Preparedness, Building Official and Police. We were aware that they were being over expended, uh, and we acknowledged it. We acknowledged it in our minutes. And we gave authority to Angus or whoever to continue to spend dollars out of that budget. Now we must look back on that time period and we must bring that over expenditures back to zero. And the way we will do that is we will, if you glance down at the column called Departments, you will see from line items in our budget, I guess budget category might be a better word than line item, but nevertheless that were under expended. We will take some of that under expenditures and transfer it over to those budget categories that were over expended. All right. I've got a note. Someone's coming in.
I just let him in. I'm presuming that's Tom.
All right. Now, um, I'm sort of going to leave it at that general level. Um, if, oh, I'm in charge, so I can come down. You will see that we over expended by $57,867 and we are moving money out of a couple, uh, under expended line items and moving it to cover, uh, the over expenditures. To, does anyone want to get into more detail or is that enough? I need, uh, a recommendation to accept the transfers as laid out in Angus's memos to make this happen.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I've got a first. Can anyone second that for me?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. I was hanging, I was hanging in space. Uh, all those who are in favor of accepting the transfers, uh, as laid out in the memo that Angus has sent to us, please say aye.
Okay. I'm going to read the roll call because I can't see everyone's face here. Um, Carmella.
Yes.
John.
Aye.
Bill. Bill, unmute yourself, Bill. Ask to unmute. Okay. I just asked him to unmute.
Aye.
There we go. Thank you. Um, and I also vote in favor.
I do not have to vote. Does Chairman?
Vote since we motioned.
unanimous. Good. Now I'm going to take you for, I'm going to go to the, this is the cover page. I'm going to take you down a little bit to have a, uh, another conversation, which I, I will do my best not to get too complicated here. The numbers that you're looking for, uh, looking at here are detailed in, are provided much more detail in the following two pages. Uh, and we discussed them in some sense last, um, at the last meeting. I, I, I don't intend to go into too much detail unless you so wish, but look at the first line there. It says unexpended general funds. And it says, and I will round, $1,021,000. It says we budgeted but did not spend. And, and I pause here because that could suggest to that we asked the citizens of Deep River to give us a million, $21,000 that we didn't spend. In, and I now wish to qualify, in that, those numbers is $650,000 of an anticipated purchase of a fire truck. That would also be included in what you see net unexpended 963. If you take out of that, the 650, you will see, you will do the math and realize that in the fiscal year ending in June 20, we underspent our budget by about $314,000, which I think is pretty accurate when you have an $18 million budget. So we underspent by about 314, now dropped down to revenue in excess of collected 434, uncollected revenues of 734. That could give you the temptation to say, we are not particularly good at estimating revenues. Again, in that 734 is the borrowing for the fire truck of 650. If you take that out, you will actually see that we have, we have revenues that we, in excess of what we budgeted about 350. Under expenditures of, uh, about 314, uh, revenues in excess of budget of 350 gets you to the 664 of surplus that I anticipate, currently anticipate to be added to our surplus from the last budget. So that is mine. Hopefully I've done that with a, a simplifying nature. So, uh, if anyone wishes to go into it more, we can. Uh, but if not, I will move on. Uh, we've already approved the, the transfers and again, I give you the comfort that I think we're going to be adding about $664,000 to surplus, which is good. Yeah. Um, if there is no questions, I'm going to stop sharing this and go into the budget itself.
But I just want everybody to keep in mind that while yes, COVID-19, we expended 41,000 and who knows else, how much else we've expended. So there are other COVID related expenses, but there are some expenses that we didn't put out because of COVID-19.
Let me catch up with the intent of your reminder. Um,
You know, I mean, we, we, yeah, we expended over in somewheres, in some areas, but not in other areas, I don't think.
Again, I want to catch up. All COVID expenses in the prior budget are in the numbers we just looked at, as is the reimbursement that Angus just commented on. When, in the, what we're about to look at in the current budget, there will be a bit of mystery on COVIDs. Is that your point? What is the, could you expand on your point a little bit more?
You know, I don't want everybody to think, oh, we, we over collected. We deliberately tried to over collect by however much. We didn't. You know, some things every year, there's some things that we do, give ourselves a little bit of leeway, but not a whole lot. Um, because we don't want to overtax people.
Okay. That is the truth.
Not trying to overtax people. We're not deliberately trying to pad the budget so we can add to the surplus. That is not the intent.
Okay. Excellent point. There is, there is not the intent to over, let me, uh, now, I am now going to turn to the expenses through December. Uh, and there they are. Cool. Just pretty, uh, I'm impressed that I'm able to do these things. Um, this is the sixth month, if you're willing to tolerate my general rule of thumb, we have, we should have spent about 50%. If we spend on a straight line basis, I will use that criteria. And if I find anything that is less than six, than 50%, I will make comment on it. But other than that, I intend to go through this with some speed. Now, I do wish to offer a lament and Angus and I have lamented privately here prior to this meeting. I apologize that you did not get this information until today. I had thought it was, I had thought it was sent out last night and I was lamenting about it being sent out last night, but, um,
I didn't get it until tonight.
You're right.
And that is not enough time for me to spend more than five seconds looking at it. It has to be. And I know we had a snowstorm on Thursday. But we could have received it either Friday. We could have received it Wednesday before, knowing that we had a massive storm coming through. And yes, it's early. That's okay. I'll take it early as opposed to not being able to spend five minutes with it. I just, it's totally unacceptable that again and again and again for the past, I don't know how many years.
Uh, and I agree. I know Angus had a private conversation with Kathy on that, and I know that he and I said the same thing to her when we were working on this and. Uh, and I agree. I know Angus had a private conversation with Kathy on that and I know that he and I said the same thing to her when we were working on this and I don't know. I don't have an answer other than I'm lamenting. Sorry.
But I'm, I'm not seeing anything on the screen except for, um, a list of.
Email.
Oh, really?
Basically seeing your email, yeah.
Not good. I see it. Stop sharing. Let's go back.
Remember, it's gotta be open.
Yeah, I've got it. Uh, well, that is, uh, that is interesting.
Do you want me to try and, okay, there we go.
You got it?
Now we got it.
Oh.
But we got it.
Oh, well, I can, it's small.
No, that's just me. I just have to shrink.
Oh, okay. I can do, I can do small. Okay, wow, that is good news. So with that in mind, I will remind you of my fifty percent, anything, everyone can holler anything they want out, but I will probably only stop when I see things of interest or greater than fifty percent. So, so, hmm. Wish to go back to one hundred. Good, there you go. All right, so selectmen are fine. I do wish to stop and remind you of elections. We have seen this before. Elections have been over expended. Um, when we get to revenues, we will see that we have been, the state of Connecticut has given us a little over five thousand dollars to help in the elections, which would be for cost here and at the, and the town clerk. So, um, now Angus and I are, I have a dream, how about this? I have a dream that when we stand in front of citizens in May, we will say to them, we have incurred the following expenditures uh, for COVID and we receive the following revenues to support that from state and, and federal. Uh, and the net to the town is, and we are working towards that. For instance, this election, we have talked about adding another line, which would be COVID-related election expenses. But, uh, but also I wish to bring to your attention is we have over expended these. We have been reimbursed for some of it, uh, and more to follow. Has anyone would like to add something or a question? Um, all right, town hall operations seem to be going very well. Town clerk. Uh, again, you remember town clerk, we authorized the town clerk to over her expend her assistant and you'll see that we have spent thirty-seven thousand dollars. And there is some reimbursement there, but we'll find out more as we go forward. I'll go here. Good, good, good. Everyone else, tax collectors fine, social services, special services are doing fine. Everyone can call out if they wish to stop and talk about anything in more detail. Um, planning and zoning, I stopped explaining the zoning only because we spent so much time in the beginning of the year talking about it. The planning and zoning consulting line reflects the adjustments we have made and we are now paying the, uh, the company that we have hired out of that line and it seems to be fine. So I just, since we've focused on it before. Um, inland wetlands remains a curiosity since there is no cost, but we are running an inland wetlands operation. So, um, building inspector, everyone's fine. I bring you down to employee benefits. Um, if you remember, we authorized and we went to a town meeting to increase that line to include the, the accrued sick pay and vacation pay for both Gina and, and John, Jonathan. Um, and I point out that the unemployment we did incur, which took us by surprise, unemployment compensation, not a whole lot, and most of that was due to the library staff being let go. They are, when we get to the library, we will see in a moment that they are back to work. So I'm, I anticipate that to be a complete number, but we will see. The world's still confusing. Um, police, always confusing, but they seem to be on budget at the moment.
As far as the library is concerned, how are we handling the physical borrowing, earning of books? Are we putting the books aside for three days to allow them to sit? Obviously, we can't clean paperbacks or anything like that.
Yeah, that's, they've got a whole process going on there now. They collect the books, um, through the door. Uh, they, they stay in the box for, for a few days and then they get cleaned and, and, you know, as, as well as they can and then they get put back on the shelves.
Are they letting people into the library? I see the, the note on the front door. Okay.
Although that, that may change, that, you know, as, as numbers go up, um, they may follow the, the lead of the town hall. And, um, and go back to remote.
All right, um, I shall continue down. Let's, let's go to civil preparedness. At our last meeting, we talked that we were going to expand, add a line item, which we have, um, to COVID expenses. And we're beginning to try to collect the COVID expenses in this line item. I'm still not, Angus can vote, I'm still not comfortable that all of our expenses are being put into this line item. So we've got, I think we have some more work to do to collect these.
Yes, we definitely have to do more work on this.
But you can see there that we, we have fifteen thousand dollars so far that we have incurred, um.
Especially if we're gonna be receiving an additional forty-one, we've got to find the rest of those expenses to validate that.
It's all there.
I'm sure it is, but it just has to be put in the right spot.
No, Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec has got a lot of expense and that, that's not shown here.
Not shown here. So yes, and we'll see that in a moment. But Laura, you have captured, if we're gonna get forty-one, we need to substantiate forty-one.
Yep.
We're not quite there yet. So we'll get there. Highway department seems to be doing pretty well. You will notice that the contingency, actually Angus, you're gonna take over here, contingency, we have spent, over expended the contingency that was due to the, what do we call, I can't even say the name of the storm where we took all the trees down.
LCACs, yeah.
Okay, and, um.
We will be reimbursed for that. It's just FEMA, it was, the federal government was slow to recognize Connecticut's, uh, emergency declaration.
So you put that into a positive. We will be reimbursed for parts of that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Good, good, good.
How about this last storm? Not that state emergency or anything, but how did we do as far as our salt supplies?
Well, um, you know, this is, this was the first major storm we've had in three, three years or so. So, um, we used up a good amount of salt. We have more coming tomorrow. Um, sand, um, we used up good, we're getting a delivery of sand today and tomorrow as well. So we're all set. It's just, uh, you know, we, we don't need those deliveries. Um, we have enough sand and salt left for another couple of small storms, but, um, we have the space for them. There's no reason not to mix up the sand and salt now and take another load of salt, uh, tomorrow. It was okay. We, we did okay. Been the first one in a long time, so we'll do better next time.
Correct. What do we get? I heard on the news, Deep River got eleven inches. I thought I got more than eleven inches.
Oh, I know I got more than that here. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, but three AM when it was pouring out, that flattened a lot of it out. So.
Ah, huh.
Wow, it made heavy snow. Um.
Okay, I shall keep on going. Um, again, I will stop when I see something of it. And I will only stop at the municipal library only because I referenced it before. Uh, the assistants seem to be back to work and, uh, about on budget. So I shall continue. Um, now I'm going to, actually, take the easy way and have Angus take over. We're talking about COVID and most of us remember encountering young folk as we went into town hall during the summer. Uh, they were in essence, uh, they are being charged the lifeguard. They were there with their bathing trunks and swimming, uh, to save you. So, but that number reflects those folks and Angus can take it from here if he wants to add anything.
Well, that's it. We, we, we hired additional people, our additional staffing for, uh, for the summer, for our summer camps. So we could continue to hold the summer camps and hold them safely. We utilized some of those, uh, some of those kids, uh, at the town hall, if you remember, when we had a gate guard at the town hall. There were a short period in the fall and again for a short period in the winter. Um, and I imagine that we will again in the spring, but before things are back to normal, but normal enough to where we can start allowing people back in.
But we, we, we expect this number to change. I think, uh,
Yes.
The brief conversation.
Will change.
Yes, some of those people need to be sent to that COVID line item.
Yep.
Yeah, I want to continue down. Subdivisions were good. Um, Parks and Rec, I think we're, uh, I think, uh, school's doing fine. I have, uh, and general capital, we're not spending a whole lot, but, uh, I will not go into any great detail. I, I offer a summary for you that, uh, um, we have an eighteen million dollar budget. We spent about eight so far and it seems to be right on budget, if not slightly below budget. Anyone have any questions on expenses? If that is true, I will go now to turn quickly to revenues if I can find them on my, uh. Hold on, share screen.
I, I looked real briefly at revenues. I saw that, um, fire marshal permits and fees was over, uh, with revenues.
Yeah, a lot of burn permits. We had a lot of brush come down.
Okay, so that's all that, that was, okay.
No, there's a lot of, a lot of other, you know, a lot of tents, tents going up, all kinds of activity that, that, um, he's out there collecting.
Tenting requires a permit?
Depends on the size of the tent, but yes.
Those big ones, yeah. Okay, didn't know that.
I am not.
Reimbursement. You want me to try and bring it up on mine?
Yeah, can you? Well, I see, I see Tom has joined us. Tom, do you wish to add anything to, uh, revenues are coming in strong?
Well, I have, oh, yeah, I have a report, but you know, go ahead. I can, if you want me to say something at the end, I can certainly do that.
Well, we looked at your report and we concluded that revenues were.
Yeah, we've done, yeah, we've done, uh, we've done very well, actually. Made a couple, we had a couple of sewer extension payments that we made on December seventeenth. Uh, one was for five thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And the other one was for a hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So those are always due on the seventeenth of December. And it's just automatic deduction to our general fund account. So those were actually from the Kirtland River Street bond payments. And, uh, one was, uh, they were both taken out in two thousand sixteen, one for a hundred and forty-four thousand, the other one was, was for two million uh, nine hundred and ten, ten thousand. So those payments, um, have been made. Uh, one thing I was gonna mention too, that, uh, on the report, there is a, what we call a dormant account. Actually, there was a letter that was received from Essex Savings Bank. Uh, it's regarding the, um, town hall auditorium account, restoration fund. Uh, there has been no activity on that account for over two years. Uh, so it automatically becomes a dormant account. So all we have to do actually is either make a, uh, very minimal, um, deposit or minimal withdrawal to reactivate that account. Um, otherwise, if it stays that way, uh, this, this state could come in and actually take those monies. So we just have to, uh, do, do something really, you know, it, it, it just, we just got the letter in October, so it's nothing that urgent. But we do have to, you know, do, make some sort of minimal transaction on, on that account. Um, the other one that I, I wanted to recognize was the Deep River Veterans Green Monument Committee. Uh, there was a large withdrawal that was made on that account. I think it went to a, a mason. Uh, but there's only, there's only twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents left in that account. And I'm just wondering if that account is supposed to be closed out. Uh, but the, the problem with that is that it's a money market account. That's the way it was set up and there's a twenty-five hundred dollar minimum. So otherwise, it will be getting a ten dollar, uh, uh, fee every, every month. So I, I, I wasn't sure if, if that committee is actually, uh, uh, wants to, wants to close out of that, that account since there's only, uh, less than thirty dollars in it. I don't, do you know Angus by any chance, uh, what their intention is?
No, I don't. Uh, what, you just actually, Tom, I was, I was responding to it for a quick.
Oh, that's okay. You know, I can, I can try to get ahold of Dick Naggett too and, and just see what the intent, uh, the intent is.
You're talking about the veterans, the veterans green?
Yeah, I'm talking about the veterans, uh, veterans.
There, there's, they're expecting more. I, I anticipate that there, you're gonna see, um, a couple of thousand dollars in that by, by January.
Okay, all right.
They want, they want, they do want to keep some money in it so they can use it for maintenance over the course.
Okay, I, I think I'll give him a call and just kind of explain. I mean, we can change it from a money market account to something else so there's not, uh, that minimum balance.
Yep.
It's, it was only there to get a little interest.
I think that's a good idea because it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be like to this, anywhere near the size that it was.
Okay, all right. So I can, I can try to, um, follow up on that. The other thing, I did have a conversation with Melissa Hurd. She's, uh, our government banking rep with Liberty Bank. Uh, because I was, I was informed that they were gonna be dropping their, their rates again. Uh, they had dropped, uh, the, on that business money market account, which was paying point five oh percent interest last month. It's point three oh now. Uh, that was a special account that, uh, uh, we had invested some monies so we could get a really good rate. But now that's, that rate's starting to, to come down significantly. Uh, the other account, two accounts, uh, it's our municipal sweep money market where we keep most of our monies. Uh, we have over two million in that account now. So that was gonna go from point two oh to point one five. And then that capital non-recurring fund account too is gonna be reduced by five basis points. Uh, you know, I just spoke to her and I said, you know, it's ridiculous because, you know, we've changed our accounts to Liberty Bank. We maintain very good balances there. So she, um, got back to me and she said they would not lower the rate. So they will keep that point two oh rate. Whoopie doo, but it's, uh, uh, but hey, every basis point counts, I guess you could say. Uh, other than that, you know, I made two wire transfers this, this month from our, uh, Liberty Bank municipal sweep account to the general fund. One was on December seventh for nine hundred and thirty thousand. One was on December fifteenth for four hundred and thirty thousand. Um, you know, we're, you know, we're still, you know, you look at our, our general fund account balances, we're at three million eight seventy-four. Uh, so we're in, in very good shape, very good shape there. Um, yeah, I'm, you know, I think we're, we're doing very well.
And funds are coming in. Good.
I got a couple of questions here real quick.
Okay.
I, I brought it up in the past, the garden club.
Yeah, I heard someone's, you know, someone said that to me. I think Kathy brought that to my attention, Jimmy. Uh, I think the only reason it's on here is because, uh, they use the, uh, uh, tax ID number for the town of Deep River.
Okay, is that, so obviously that's kosher thing to do.
Yeah, uh, yeah, absolutely. So that's the reason why it's being reported here. We really have nothing to do with that account.
That was, that was my point. My point was why it's a private organization and other than using the tax ID number. And then I just wonder, like I said, is that the, is that the proper thing to do to allow, for the amount of money that they spend? How much money did they save using the tax ID from the town?
You know, it's, it's a, it's a non-interest, it's a non-interest bearing account, so they don't get interest on it. So, but that's, that's the only reason it's being, uh, reported. Uh, they usually like to report anything that's being used, you know, as far as the, uh, tax ID number for the town. Those accounts are listed, but I understand where you're coming from on that.
And as far as the town hall restoration fund, I mean, there's not any more restoration going on to the town hall auditorium. Is, is, what is, what is, what is the status of that account? Is it just gonna become an inactive account like the, like the, uh, one of the other ones you were talking about, you know?
Well, that, uh, you know, that is the, that is the fund that's dormant. That is the dormant fund.
Oh, I thought you mentioned.
That's the one that hasn't had any activity for two years.
Okay, I missed.
Yeah, so that's the one, that's the one I'm addressing right now. So.
I've been, I've been trying to, just to jump in for a second. I've been trying to get the town hall committee. They need, they need to do a couple of small purchases. Um, and, and that's, I've been asking them to, to spend that money. They just have not.
Who, um, who is the person, who's the person to contact on that?
Carol, Carol Jones.
Carol, okay. Um, I can, either one of us can talk to Carol as long as, like I said, as long as we could, you know, the transaction is made. I mean, it could be for five dollars for that matter, but as long as something, that will reactivate the account. So, uh.
Why don't we, um, why don't you and I, uh, have a call with her tomorrow?
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to arrange so we, the three of us can get on the phone.
Okay, all right. And, and other than that, I, you know, I think we're, you know, ending the year on a, you know, very good note. Uh, I think we're pretty strong.
Good, just good. All right.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, okay, um, from now on, can I just ask one question? Can Laurie, can you send me, um, the, like, the ID number and the pass code?
Yeah, I've just got to update your email because I, I just looked and saw that my emails to you a moment ago got bounced back.
Was it from the bank?
Uh, it might have been. I can, wait a minute, email error. Hold on, where did it go?
All right. Yeah, because I never get any of this information. So I.
Undeliverable. It went to tlynder@snetnet, unknown.
No, it's, can I give it to you or you want me to?
You've got my, you've got my cell phone number, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just send me a text or send me the file and I'll, I'll put you back on the list.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it got bounced back to me. So.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Laurie, can you bring up the revenues? You think I was having, I can go snooping for it. Okay.
Yeah, I will bring up the revenues. Hold on, let me get out of this one and revenues. That's June. Hold on, let me get into plus two.
That's the knitting pattern of the day.
That's not, okay, perfect.
Yes, there's a lot of knitting on there.
Perfect.
There's a lot of knitting in there. Okay.
Excellent, cool.
For everyone.
Little bit bigger.
Alright, hold on, let me see what I can do. There we go. You've got my full screen.
Good.
Cool.
I can get, sorry, I think.
Alright, and Laurie, you're going to have to drive. Good. Alright, I just bring to your attention property taxes, supplementing Tommy's point. Look, we budgeted 15. We've got 8.6 and revenues are coming in. So things are coming in strong for tax collection. As we started the conversation, as we go into January, who knows what the world holds. So we will watch. Alright, and let's continue down. Anything, anyone can jump in here. I wish to, at least for conversation, look at building permits. We budgeted $50,000. We have received 47,400 at the moment. We're suggesting that people are putting additions on their houses. People are moving in and doing something, but that is a big number. Still.
You can see the same thing with conveyance tax, but.
Ah, yes, those two. Those two should go in hand in hand. Yes, excellent. Yes. Okay, good, good, good. Let's look at Tommy's short term, since he brought it up. We budgeted 35. We're six months and we've collected what? $5,000 of interest. So we might see that one fall short as we go through the year. Let's, let's drop down to the FEMA grants. Do you see that there, Laurie? And there are two FEMA grant lines that have been added. Angus indicated that FEMA's did, did reimburse us for costs that we incurred in the prior budget. They have not reimbursed us for anything yet. We had said that's possible. And we had, we had said that the fire department applied for a FEMA grant. We have little thought that that will be rewarded this year. So that number could fall short as well, but.
That number will fall short. That's not going to come short.
Angus, could you tell us what that, the next line? I can't hardly read it. Mini CRF grant, which we have $0.
That's what we were speaking about before. That's the, that's the municipal Corona Relief Fund Grant.
Okay.
And that's the monies that we were speaking about before. We anticipate we'll get 31,000, around that 31,000.
Excellent, okay. Laurie, why don't you take us down a bit to the next page, which is sort of the final page. Again, we can look at any numbers anyone wants, but I want you to glance at the second line from the bottom. And it is referred to, referred to as Register and Clerk Grant. And there's 5,320 that we have received to date. And that is when we talked about the elections and the town clerk dollars. That is the reimbursement we have seen so far.
Now she generally has some grant funds coming in, but it.
That's a different grant.
That's a different grant. That is correct.
Grant. Alright, is that up here somewhere?
It is.
Yes, if you look, it's stopped, it's not moving. It's at a 42205.
Right here, town clerk grant. Okay.
And that's usually about 55 and she hasn't gotten it yet, but correct. Alright, Laurie, I tell you what, take us all the way down to the bottom and we'll say things like our current budget, assume we were going to receive in revenues 18 million, oh nine, 91,000. We received nine and a half million so far. So six months. That seems pretty good. Unless anyone has anything to offer.
No, that's good. I didn't realize I could make that larger. Sorry.
I think Tom, Tom could answer this as well, but as, as Kate could, but I think we're, we're on very close to on course with what we normally are at when it comes to percentage of collection.
That's correct. That is correct. So again, we will see as the new year arrives, but good. Alright folks, as far as I'm concerned, this ends the entertainment part of our meeting.
We'll have one more fun thing to do. Which is, we have to, and I have to get out of this and shrink this down so I can see where I am. We have to approve our schedule for next year with the exception of the date. And I'm just trying to bring it up. Sorry, the date of the annual hearing. That's the only date which, and I'm trying to bring it up. I will share that in just a moment. If I can find Zoom meeting. Nope, that's not you. Hold on. Where did you folks go? There you are. Okay, let me share my screen. Schedule. Okay, so here is the schedule for next year. To be determined, town budget hearing date at auditorium. But I have up here that all of them will be town hall as permitted and via teleconference. So I'm basically just going to get rid of those because they're both going to be town hall. Nope, and teleconference, I'm presuming.
Oh, I, I actually wanted to offer a polite challenge to that. Is it town hall and teleconferencing or, or?
Right now, I think it should be and/or.
We will not have the capabilities probably in May.
I'm not optimistic that we will have the capabilities, but I'm also, I'm reluctant to say we're not going to.
Sounds good. Alright.
Okay, so I'm going to put and/or.
Yes, and/or, very good. So you're still searching for a date for the town budget hearing? Is that set? Isn't there a certain amount of days before the town meeting it has to be done?
It can't be less than 14 days. So what we've done traditionally, and it's not set in, that's, that's, that requirement is set in statute. But our ordinance calls for our town meeting to be on the third Monday of May. We traditionally, as long as I've been in town, we've done, we've also done the town budget hearing on the two Mondays before that, two weeks before that.
Okay.
There is different interpretation as to whether or not less than 14 days means 14 days. And that's why we moved it last year. I'm of mind that it might be appropriate for us to push it forward a little bit so that we can have our budget hearing prior to the same night as the Region Four Referendum. Which is also on the first Monday of May. So if we can get our our ducks in a row, get our budget done before the end of April, maybe it will be appropriate to have our meeting a little bit before the first Monday of May.
So do we have the flexibility to keep that undetermined at the moment? When you first public your, publish your minutes or your schedule, Laurie?
Yeah, as long as we have adequate time to notify people in town via the published and on the signs that the annual hearing is going to be on this day. Yeah.
Okay.
Is basically for our meetings, the, the hearing comes actually from the selectman's office, that notice.
Alright, so we will leave it to be determined?
Yeah, I'm going to leave the town, annual town meeting as it's supposed to be.
Okay, yes.
Hearing. And then so all workshops at this point, starting March 2nd. So those ones is 7 o'clock. Did that work for everyone last year to meet at 7 instead of 7:30 on Tuesdays? Leaving them on Tuesdays, but.
Fine with me. Well, that's, I think you're fine with me.
And how does everybody else feel?
Yeah, we're, works here.
The only, the only time that is not going to, might not work is the nights of the Board of Selectmen's meetings, but you guys can go ahead.
Very good, okay.
Um, but as long as we have co meeting hearing, we can start and record and then get it down to you.
Yep.
That way.
Do we record workshops as well?
We're going to have to this year because the minutes have to go through. So they're a public, I'm presuming, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, we'll record them. We won't broadcast it unless we're requested to, but.
Alright, good. Angus, you had said to me this afternoon, I think, that you were collecting data and wanted to get started collecting information from boards and commission and wanted to get started earlier.
Yeah.
Should we therefore schedule a February workshop?
No, what I'd, I'd like to try something a little different, but and I would like to include the Board of Selectmen in the preparation of the budget as opposed to just me and me and you. So by the time we get to the workshops, Board of Selectmen will already have had a couple of meetings and gone over our budget. And I just want to, you know, I, I'm concerned about our you know, this was a big surplus this year and I want to make sure, I know, I'm confident that it was a result of of more money, more revenue than we anticipated. There was no way to see coming and some expenditures that didn't, that did not occur.
Yes.
Simple things like, like the, you know, 30, 30 some odd thousand dollars from highway that just wasn't spent on overtime. It was such a gentle winter. But I, I really want to go through this carefully and make sure that, and really ensure confidently that we are not, we're not over spending or over charging, over taxing.
Okay, alright. So we will keep our first scheduled workshop in March. Okay.
I think that's, I think that's good.
We do not have to notice, right? I'm answering my own question. If the selectmen get together, I get together and talk about the budget, that does not have to be noticed, right?
You and I get together, it does not have to be noticed. If, if the Board of Selectmen gets together, it does.
Okay.
We'll just be doing our own. My intention is really just to do our own workshops. Our own reviews. So when we come to you, it will be from the Board of Selectmen as opposed to just from the first selection. I, I'd like the Board of Selectmen to have a good look at this prior to the, but the workshops.
Alright, alright, all good. Alright, Laurie.
We've got a good team. We should, we should include everybody in it.
Good, alright.
As long as they're able to.
Alright, Laurie, it's a, what do they, what do they call it when you're in the newspaper? It's, that's a, that's a, that's a rap?
Yeah.
That's a rap. That's a rap. You got it. Cool. Alright. Folks, does anyone have any new business they would like to discuss? Absoniting new business. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Christmas and I motion to adjourn.
Okay, I got it first. Anyone have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor of a journey? Say aye. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, I wanted to give everybody a notice. This is just news.
Still, hold on.
Yeah, it's just news. If people watch all the way through, this is, this is really good news for the town and for the state and for the country. But our health district is going to be receiving a and a shipment of, of vaccines that we will begin to to just, to administer beginning next week. So, you know, our, 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 as well as Essex, Chester, Saybrook, Clinton and Westbrook and Killingworth and Durham, Killingworth and Hattam will, our, our, our first responders who are in the 1A category will begin to be given shots next week. So. So this is moving forward. We are making progress and we just, you know, it's nice to have, to know that that's happening locally before the end of the year. So this, I'm pretty excited about that.
And 1A is fire, ambulance, police?
Ambulance, health workers.
Okay.
Fire.